Good evening. I'd like to call our meeting to order. This is our regularly scheduled city council meeting for Tuesday, June 7th. And if you would, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and now we'll do roll call.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Doug Glasbell. Jay David Reed.
Present.
Ed Yuliberry. Barbara Bynum is absent. All other city councilors are present.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go to the next section, which is Call for Public Comment. Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment on a non-agenda item? If there is, I will read all of the necessary language. If not, we'll just move on to our next item, which is Approval of Minutes: City Council Consideration of the Minutes of the May 17th Regular City Council Meeting and the Minutes of the May 31st Special City Council Meeting. And I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the May 17th, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting as well as the minutes of the May 17th, 2022 Regular City.
Special.
Second. Oh, it has. It's special. Regular. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Doug Glasbell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry. We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item number seven is a Hotel and Restaurant Liquor License Transfer Application. City Council consideration of the transfer of the hotel and restaurant liquor license at 1032 6450 Road from Kennicen Processing LLC, doing business as Kennicen Processing LLC, to Kennicen Processing Company LLC, doing business as Kennicen Processing Company LLC, for consumption on the licensed premises. And this is Assistant City Attorney Chris Dowsey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before City Council is an application to transfer a hotel and restaurant liquor license for Kennicen Processing Company LLC located at 1032 6450 Road. This is a public inquiry for the transfer of a hotel and restaurant license. The permit is in order. Fees have been paid. From city staff's review of the application, we've seen nothing that would prevent council from transferring this license, notwithstanding this inquiry. Council can make a decision at the end of this or defer for up to 30 days. At this time, I'll ask the applicant to come to the podium and introduce themselves to council and announce their home address for the record.
Might not go that low. Zach Prock, 72015, Kennicen Road, Montrose, Colorado, A1401.
Mr. Mayor, do you wish the, do you and the councilors wish to examine the petitioner at this point, or do you wish I ask some of the preliminary questions that are frequently asked?
We will have you ask preliminary questions, please.
Thank you. Could you please tell us about Kennicen's?
We've got a meat processing facility just off the bypass on 6450 Road where we have a deli and do some restaurant stuff as well and want the liquor license for that.
Perfect. The city of Montrose is serious about enforcing the liquor laws as the state of Colorado. Would you please describe your familiarity with those laws?
Yeah, we are familiar with that and our, our staff has taken the classes to fulfill all of those, make sure everything's taken care of.
Perfect. Are you familiar with the underage drinking task force here in Montrose?
I am.
So you are familiar with the liquor law education server training classes?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And you understand that it is the city's intention that all licensees in the city of Montrose and their servers attend these trainings?
I do.
Would you be willing to commit to the council that if the license is transferred, that you as a licensee, all managers and all servers will attend such training within 30 days if they're not already certified?
Yes, we can do that.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, council, do you have any other questions?
Any other questions, council? All right, we'll accept public comment. And seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the transfer of the hotel, excuse me, hotel and restaurant liquor license at 1032 6450 Road from Kennicen Processing LLC, doing business as Kennicen Processing LLC, to Kennicen Processing Company, doing business as Kennison Processing Company LLC.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Doug Glasbell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry.
Yes.
Mayor Frank, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Now we're moving on to our next item, which is Ordinance 2590, second reading. Thank you, Mr. Prock. City Council consideration of Ordinance 2590 on second reading and ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado, amending Title V, Chapter 15, Sections 2 and 7 regarding a sales tax exemption for a fee from the state of Colorado is imposing on carryout bags. And once again, Assistant City Attorney Chris Dowsey.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Again, this is the second reading, as you stated, so this has been talked about quite a bit. What this is, is going to be a sales tax exemption for the carryout bag fee that the state of Colorado is essentially forcing the city of Montrose to implement. The 10-cent fee that is going to be implemented on each single use bag is essentially going to be taxed right now, so with this sales tax, we are making this as little effect on our citizens as possible. Any questions?
Any questions from council? Seeing none, I'll accept public comment. And seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 2590 on second reading.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Doug Glasbell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry.
Yes.
Mayor Frank, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number nine, the 6700 Road DeJulio Edition Annexation. City Council will hold a hearing on the annexation of the 6700 Road DeJulio Edition.
Mr. Mayor, as previously, I've abstained due to family relations. At this time, I'd like to abstain again.
Thank you. If you don't mind, leaving the room, sir. We'll begin with Resolution 2022-11. City Council consideration of Resolution 2022-11, finding as fact for the DeJulio Edition. And I believe this is Planner One, William Reese.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, members of the public. I'll be giving one presentation for Resolution 2022-11, Ordinance 2591 and Ordinance 2592, as they are all related to the 6700 DeJulio Edition Annexation. However, these are separate action items. We've brought this to you before, but this is a proposal for the annexation and initial zoning for a property located just south of the intersection of Miami Road and 6700 Road. This property is currently addressed as 67008 Miami Road. Property is approximately 9.35 acres in size. It is within the city's urban growth boundary, the city water service area and the city sewer service area. The area is urbanizing and more than one-sixth of the perimeter is contiguous to city limits. The purpose of this annexation is for the completion of 6700 Road, and as part of this process, the city will be securing part of the property for right-of-way. There is an annexation agreement for this property, which went through council approval on April 19th, and I'll speak more about that in a bit. The zoning of the surrounding area is R1A, large estate district, R2, low-density district, R3A, medium-density district, and agricultural land outside of city limits. In order to remain consistent with the properties, both to the east and the west, the proposing, proposed zoning for this annexation is R1A, large estate district. As part of the annexation agreement, a few variations from our land use code were included in order to facilitate compatible development of the remnant parcels post-right-of-way acquisition. Our ordinary minimum lot depth of 125 feet in the R1A district is reduced to 90 feet. The front setback minimum of 25 feet is reduced to 20, and the agreement spells out one shared driveway access to 6700 Road per two parcels with a turnaround to avoid backing into the road. When zoning annexations, the proposed designation shall not adversely affect the public health, safety, and welfare. This application was brought before the Planning Commission on May 25th, where they made a recommendation of the R1A large estate zoning district designation. According to our code, this designation is intended to provide an area of large, single-family residential lots with a semi-rural environment. And so here is the annexation map, which shows the property to be annexed, as well as the continuity to city limits. According to our comprehensive plan, the future land use chapter, this area is listed as residential mixed density low, which is primarily intended for single-family homes, but may include duplexes or townhomes, and it is intended to preserve the traditional building pattern of the existing residential development in Montrose. Property is within Growth Area 1, which represents the most cost-efficient areas for the city to grow, and comprises of planted but unbuilt lots, annexed but unplatted land, and unannexed enclaves. And so in summary, the area is urbanizing and meets the continuity requirements. The proposal is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare, city and state annexation policies, and the comprehensive plan. City staff recommends approval of the annexation and of the R1A large estate district zoning designation.
And I might just add a couple small pieces. So for anybody in the public looking at these things tonight, so there are two items tonight. This initial one is focused on the annexation and zoning. Couple items down, we'll be talking about the design of the project itself. So if there are questions about the road project and all of its elements, that'd probably be a better time to address those if those come up. And I'll try and hit on a lot of the questions that have come up. Then we are also joined by Paul DeJulio, one of the owners of this property. So I just want to say thank you for joining, Paul. Thank you for helping get us to this point. And I guess I'll turn it over to you if you have anything you'd like to add.
At this point, Scott, no, I don't. So I appreciate still the city council knows that you've been a real pleasure to work with. So thank you.
Likewise. Thank you.
Any questions from council? In that case, I would...
I might just add that, you know, for the, for any one listening in, that council has reviewed this numerous times in the past and therefore probably know everything we need to know in order to take action. But thank you.
In that case, I would consider a motion to adopt Resolution, oh, I'm sorry, I'll accept public comment. And seeing none, I'll accept a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-11.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2022-11, findings of fact for the 6700 DeJulio Edition.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Doug Glasbell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote of all present.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to Ordinance 2591, first reading. As we've already had the presentation, are there any other questions concerning this? And seeing none, I will hold a hearing and I will open a hearing. Any members of the public wish to comment? And seeing none, we'll close the hearing. And I will entertain a motion to pass Ordinance 2591.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Ordinance 25, excuse me, 2591 on first reading as presented.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Doug Glasbell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote of all present.
Thank you. And our next item is Ordinance 2592 on first reading. Consideration of Ordinance 2592 on first reading and ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado, providing for the zoning of the 6700 DeJulio Edition as an R1A large estate district. Once again, we'll open a hearing. Any members of the public wish to comment? Yes, sir. If you would, please come and state your name and address for the record.
Evening, councilors. My name is Kenneth Otto. I live at 2814 Primrose Court. That is adjacent to the properties that are in question for zoning, and I'm mostly here in case anybody was looking to recommend different zoning. So I just wanted to speak and say that as someone living nearby, I believe R1A is appropriate. Both sides of the, properties on both sides are R1A, and I hope that you will pass zoning of R1A for that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will close the hearing. And we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, I move to adopt Ordinance 2592 on first reading as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Doug Glasbell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote of all present.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the next item. If somebody would be kind enough to We'll give every a chance to get to the appropriate documents for the Brown Ranch. All right, moving on to item number 11, Brown Ranch Subdivision Amendment Number Four, Preliminary Platte. City Council consideration of the Brown Ranch Subdivision Amendment Number Four, Preliminary Platte. And this is again Planner One, William Reese.
Thank you again. So this is an application for two distinctive areas within the Brown Ranch subdivision. The northern piece is off of Donegal Drive, and the southern piece is an extension of Chestnut Drive. And so in total, the application consists of approximately 17.233 acres. The northern piece is when the, within the R1 very low-density district and consists of 17 single-family residential lots. The southern piece is in the R2 low-density district and consists of 24 single-family lots. And so this application is in the preliminary platte stage. This did go before the Planning Commission on May 25th. Planning Commission recommended to city council the approval of the preliminary platte, which would allow for the construction of infrastructure improvements. When reviewing subdivision applications, we consider conformance with a master plan, relationship of development to topography, soils, et cetera, availability of utilities such as water and sewer, compatibility with the natural environment, traffic flow, emergency services availability, and the impacts on local schools. According to our comprehensive plan, this area is listed as residential mixed density low, the same as the last application, which is primarily for single-family homes. Both of the zoning districts are intended for low-density, single-family residential development. The Brown Ranch Plan Development Number Two was approved by the Planning Commission and City Council back in 2003, which allowed for smaller lot sizes for the properties within the R1 zoning district. All lots in this application adhere to that previously approved plan development. And so here is the platte itself, which this first page just consists of the platte notes and the signature lines. And then this second page represents the northern piece of this preliminary platte. This is the area within the R1 zoning district, and this is also in tonight's packet. This consists of 17 single-family lots. And then this third page represents the southern portion. Note that the north arrow is pointing to the left on this map, and this is the extension of Chestnut Drive. This consists of 24 single-family homes. So in conclusion, staff finds that this preliminary platte is in compliance with all subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan. This proposal meets the intent of zoning and of the 2003 plan development. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary platte with the standard condition that's placed on all of our preliminary plattes, as shown on this slide, also within tonight's packet. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
So Mr. Reese, I noticed, and I want to point out that these parcels are interconnected by existing minor roads, the collectors.
They kind of come off of, I think one comes off of Donegal, and the other would tie up with the eventual, eventual extension of Otter Road. That southern piece there is, or kind of running top to bottom on that page, is a future extension of Otter. With their phasing plan, it's not warranted yet. There's not enough critical mass to bring that on. I think the fire department was looking at a temporary turnaround with that, but eventually this will tie to Otter. And the other is off of Donegal, which ties directly to, I think that's off of Donegal, correct? Which ties directly to Sunshine Road up there.
Any other questions from council?
Mr. Reese, I note from the council packet that there are no public written comments on this issue. Is that correct?
We did not receive any written public comment.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll accept public comment. Seeing none, we would entertain a motion.
Excuse me. Let me get to the right motion here. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Brown Ranch Subdivision Amendment Number Four, Preliminary Platte, expressly conditioned upon city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinance, and municipal code provisions are met and that the applicant adequately addresses all of staff's concerns prior to execution of the final platte. The city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final platte prior to all conditions being satisfied.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Doug Glasbell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry.
Mayor.
Mayor Frank, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. All right, moving on, item number 12, Ordinance 2588, second reading. City Council consideration of Ordinance 2588 on second reading and ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado, granting and authorizing the conveyance of an interest in city-owned real estate pursuant to 1-9-2 of the official code of the city of Montrose. And this is City Engineer Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So no changes since the last reading. I'll just give a quick overview for anybody who, this is their first time seeing it, or for the public. Montrose, so the Montrose County Justice Center is here at the intersection of Grand and Townsend. And the city used to own a larger parcel here as part of some old treatment works on the kind of northwestern corner of their site. That had been vacated over to the Justice Center in the past as part of their previous expansions, and it kind of came to light that there's a little remnant tail that was used for access to that parcel that remains right here. They approached the city asking if we would be willing to deed that over to them to be allowed for future years, use for their future expansions under parking lot areas as they grow. We want to preserve the east-west piece of this for future expansions of this intersection for capacity purposes, but this lower tail really doesn't have any beneficial use to us. It's small enough that it doesn't warrant an appraisal or purchase the costs of doing such would exceed the value of the land, and we are preserving a utility easement through there. So because of, because it's property not, you know, dedicated right-of-way, it's done as a disposal of property with a deed to follow up. So that'll be the process ordinance first, and then there's a deed to sign that will get recorded to convey that.
Thank you. Any questions from council? We'll accept public comment. And seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 2588 on second reading as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Doug Glasbell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry.
Yes.
Mayor Frank, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item 13, the 6700 Road Extension Design Contract. City Council consideration of a contract awarded to Delmont Consultants in the amount of $97,200 for completion of design studies and civil design associated with the 6700 Road Extension Project. Once again, City Engineers Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor. So it's no changes since our discussions at work session, but for the public's benefit, I'll give a quick overview. This is the extension of 6700 between Sunnyside and Miami where it's currently missing. So those previous actions were related to securing the right-of-way at the northernmost end to facilitate this project. So the first step of that would be the design, which was budgeted for this year in 2022, knowing, hoping that all this would come together. And we're looking to, or suggest budgeting this in 2023 per the development agreement to construct in '23. So for the designs, we go out with a request for proposals to publicly procure proposals for the, for design of the project. Design entails a lot of the survey work to get all the base map and topography established. There's a lot of design studies that go into that for, you know, geotechnical hydraulics, hydrology, things of that sort, for all the storm sizing. We do have utility extensions included for water and sewer. Obviously, design of the roadway, getting the conflicting utilities out of the way. Unfortunately, we do have a couple of comm boxes in the way of this road also, which has been our favorite pastime, relocating comm boxes. The road itself is initially designed as a straight-through road, but we are doing preliminary designs for roundabouts at the major intersections, which is pretty typical. As traffic growth occurs, our major intersection, intersections at all of our minor arterials will eventually, you know, be controlled with either roundabouts or signals. So to make sure when we do those utility relocations that we're outside of the footprint of any future work, we do that initial design now. And then we are also partnering with the DeJulio, since we're doing all of the survey and design work anyway, to platte those six lots that are envisioned on each side of the road, which would be half-acre lots for the R1A zoning that was just approved. We got three proposals. The lowest price was Delmont Consultants. We do a rating system that's comprised of qualifications and price. They were well-qualified and the lowest price, so that brought them to the top. So that's why we're recommending award to them. The proposal price was $87,200. We've elected to recommend an additional $10,000 of contingency if necessary for a couple of items in the product, or elements of the product that are kind of uncertain and not scoped at this time, and that's permitting with the Bureau of Reclamation for the discharge. We don't know how involved that may be. We kind of have some unique drainage characteristics out here with a federal Bureau of Reclamation drain ditch running through the property. And then also not knowing the extents of any potential wetland mitigation that may come with that. So the, you know, those ditches typically have wetlands on their fringe, which are under the jurisdiction of the Army Corps of Engineers. So not knowing how involved that may be leaves a contingency for that. Couple other elements of the product that are outstanding. So the other piece of that, we're working concurrent on the right-of-way purchase. All of that's been approved by council. It is in escrow, ready to go as soon as we close on everything. We might, everybody knows aware of the pink house at the intersection there, 6700 and Miami. We probably would work on demolition of that sooner than later if everything goes to closing, just because it becomes a public, or it's a risk for public nuisance of people occupying it or doing unsafe activities in there. We have looked at potentially moving it. It was far gone enough that the house movers said demolition is going to be our best route. It's an aged enough house. We also might try and get a jumpstart on communication cabinet relocations, given the lead time that those have presented us in the, in the past. And then depending on how the drainage design goes and how the Bureau of Reclamation permitting goes, we might end up needing to purchase a small corner of some adjacent properties for... for purposes of retention pond for stormwater. Should be anything major, it'd be a small strip or something, and we've kind of initially engaged the adjacent landowners that that might be coming, or starting conversations on that. So the design itself would be done in 2023, and again, or in 2022, spill into the first part of 2023, and then if all was a go for construction, that would start in the spring of 2023. We had a hundred thousand dollars in the budget for this, so we're three thousand under that. And a couple of questions we've gotten from the public regarding the project, so there's been concern about irrigation and accommodating irrigation. So when we design these projects, we leave all irrigation functionality as good as or better than it is currently. So, you know, if there's waste ditches or, you know, irrigation supply ditches across the area, we would reestablish those. If there's diversion boxes, we would relocate those out of conflict with the roadway and build them, you know, either new if they're far enough gone that you can't move them without, you know, them crumbling or things of that sort. Or replace in kind to make sure that there aren't disruptions to the irrigation flow and that there, nobody's left with anything less than what they have now. So that's a common question that comes up. Questions come up about purchase of property adjacent to this, so we're just securing the right-of-way for 6700 Road. The outside strips are remaining in private ownership, and they do, as we understand it, do intend to plat those lots into the residential lots, but that's a private matter. We'll help them with it if they want to. But as far as how those get divvied up and plated, that's being kind of driven by the owners. And people have asked, you know, can they buy those or request to buy those? If they wanted to do that, they could reach out to the owners, and if they have, are indicated that they'd be willing to go out their contact information. So if anybody needs that, feel free to send them my way, and I can point them towards the owners. I think that's most of the questions I've gotten so far. So I'm happy to answer any others or if anything comes up from the public.
As I recall, the last time we discussed this in work session, that salvation as opposed to demolition was still an option, and you're satisfied that since that time, that salvation is not an option and demolition is the only?
Of the house itself, yeah. So we reached out to the prominent house mover in town, who's kind of, I think, the only one actually. Really talented in what they do, and they're really good at saving things that can be saved. And they indicated that it was, the foundation and the building condition was far enough gone that it wouldn't be salvable. That being said, we do walk it with the owners, and interior, or interior items, we usually reach out to nonprofits to see if there's anything of value to make sure that those, they get a chance at those. We do that after abatement, so we have to do asbestos abatement. We don't want people going around and spreading things all over or getting exposed. So we'll do the abatement, and then at that point, reach out. There's not much of value in this house, but kind of open the interior stuff to nonprofits. And then we've got a, we're still trying to figure out a way to do the mature landscaping, too. So there's some pretty mature maple and pine trees on the property that were, we'll reach out to an arborist to see if they're small enough that they can be spaded and relocated somewhere. We're working with the owner on where those may go if they want to put them onto the lots, because we definitely want to try and keep those alive if we can. Sometimes, unfortunately, they're too big that you can't spade them without compromising their, you know, stability, and it eventually dies. So that's something we definitely try to do as much as possible on these projects.
And just one last comment. I also think it's important to note for the record that even with the ten thousand dollar contingency, the proposal of Delmont is substantially below the next proposal.
Great.
I'd also point out that in anticipation of this, we had already budgeted that hundred thousand dollars for this, so we are three thousand dollars under what our already existing budget item is.
Correct.
Are there any other questions from council? Seeing none, we'd accept public comment. And seeing none, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to award a contract to Delmont Consultants in the amount of ninety-seven thousand two hundred dollars for completion of design studies and civil design associated with the 6700 Road Extension Project as presented.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Doug Glasper?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry? Mayor Frank, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item fourteen, Main Street, streetscaping project authorization. A little bit of a tongue twister there. City Council consideration of the authorization of two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand for improvements to the northeast corner of the intersection of Park Avenue and Main Street, including a contract with Kiboski Construction LLC in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand nine hundred and eight and ninety-four cents. And this is Public Works Manager Jim Shid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. So yes, as you said, this would include a contract with Kiboski in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand nine hundred and eight dollars. And in addition to that would be a ten percent contingency, which is how we got to the total of two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand. This project accomplishes a couple of things. I think first is the condition of the sidewalk, curb, and gutter on the Park and Main intersection on the, on the northeast side is in really poor shape and has been very difficult for us to maintain. It really lends itself to a wholesale replacement. Patching it really hasn't been working and continues to deteriorate. So this project is a full replacement of the curb and gutter and sidewalk for half-block in both directions here. And then also, this project extends the look and feel of our Main Street through this corner on Main Street. So it'll mirror both sides across Main Street and across Park with trees and lights to, again, kind of mirror the, the look of the surrounding Main Street. Now, Kiboski Construction will be working in the area anyway later this year in a facade replacement on the Montrose Hardware Building. And that's not associated with this contract, but it is, our dark program actually awarded a grant for the facade to assist with the facade, but that is direct to the building owner. And so Kiboski will be working on the building later this year anyway, and we would like to take advantage of utilizing a qualified construction team that's onsite to do both projects at the same time, to complete the facade and the sidewalk replacement at the same time would definitely save both the city and the owner of the, of the building money. So that's why we're recommending, recommending utilizing Kiboski for this work. We were able to get detailed pricing breakdown through subcontractors that are working for Kiboski to verify that the pricing is accurate and fair. Within their contract, we did include a small escalation contingency for some items that we've, we've been noticing price changes in. But to get ahead of that, we actually would utilize some of the lights that we have in stock in Public Works. They're the same lights we have throughout the rest of our downtown. And to, again, to lock that pricing in, we know what those cost, obviously, because we've already purchased them. That would help us stay away from items that pricing can change. So that would be one item that we would provide. Public Works would also do asphalt patching associated with the curb and gutter replacement, striping, and anything else street-related as the project is completed. Rob Peterson, the owner of the adjacent building here, I think, I think he's here. He'd like to speak to you as well about the project.
First of all?
If you would come up and give your, to the podium, and give your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, I'm Robert Peterson, and Montrose Hardware address is 601 East Main Street here in Montrose, Colorado. I wanted to thank the council for allowing me to speak, and I just wanted to reach out and basically thank the council and the city and everybody for all the hard work that they put into downtown. It's absolutely beautiful. I'm thrilled to death to be a business owner in the downtown area, and it's maintained phenomenally, and it, I mean, the viability of Main Street is just amazing to me. I see so many other Main Streets shutting down, and this one's moving forward and going into the future. So I'm very proud to be a business owner in Montrose.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
And I have nothing further to add, but I would welcome any questions if there are any. Any questions from council?
I noticed it says here the consideration of authorization of two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, and then the other amount is two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand.
Yep.
Is that, that two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand is part of the two-hundred-and-thirty-eight, or is that seven?
It is. Yep, so the two-fifteen is the Kiboski Construction contract amount, and the two-thirty-eight is a ten percent on top of that two-fifteen. And that's-
For contingency.
For contingency. So if there's an unforeseen, if there's something that we uncover under the sidewalk that we need to address, we don't know of now, that is not known by Kiboski and their construction now, but if we would ask them to address whatever that issue may be, that's what that contingency is, is for above the two-fifteen amount.
Okay, the reason why I ask is because in the council action packet, it, it says authorization, and this one here just says different wording. So I'm just curious if, if they were the same and you clarified it. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? I would accept public comment. And seeing none, would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars for improvements to the northeast corner of the intersection of Park Avenue and Main Street, including a contract with Kiboski Construction LLC in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and ninety-four cents.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Doug Glasper?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry? Mayor Frank, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, may I can make another, just one more comment about this project? As, I'm pretty interested in the curb gutter and sidewalks in the area, and that particular corner is, really doesn't have any curb or gutter left to it, and it's going to tie in quite well with the future repairs and the, and the work that hopefully it gets done on the north part. Thank you.
Thank you. So moving on to item fifteen, asbestos abatement contract award. City Council consideration of the authorization and award of funds in the amount of seventy-seven thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty cents for asbestos abatement in the city facility at 400 East Main, previously the Wells Fargo Building, including the award of a contract with Asbestos Professionals LLC in the amount of sixty-seven thousand four hundred and ninety-two and thirty-five cents. And once again, city Public Works Manager Jim Shid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. So this is the first step in the renovation of the building at 400 East Main, ultimately that we would be moving city hall operations into. So abating the building was the first step so that we can start to make upgrades within the building. And so we had an assessment performed earlier this year to assess what levels of asbestos are present in the building, and surprisingly, there was much less than we anticipated for the era of construction of this building. I was expecting a lot more. So we got the assessment back, and, and even the bids for construction, which are in front of you today, was pleasantly surprised that this was relatively low compared to what we've seen in other buildings of the same era. So that, that assessment was done by Grand River Environmental, and that was issued as an RFP for the removal of that asbestos, and we received two bids, one from Asbestos Professionals and the other from MFH, sorry, MFH Environmental Corporation, and those are both from the Front Range here in Colorado. We have not worked with either one of them, but both come with good references, and they seem to be well-qualified for the work. So with that, we're recommending utilizing Asbestos Professionals to perform the abatement. The schedule we provided would have that completed by the end of July, which would allow for the rest of the project to begin, basically. We have to get this done first. In this case, the contract amount is the sixty-seven four ninety-two, but we are recommending a fifteen percent contingency on top of that, which would bring the total authorized to seventy-seven thousand six sixteen. And that's because of the, of the assessment type that was done on the building was a non-destructive asbestos assessment, and that was because it wasn't our building at the time, this is previous to city ownership, and so we didn't want to go in there to do extensive removal of wall systems to view what was behind them. And so the assessment was basically on the surface of these walls. And so there is potential that there could be some asbestos that we don't see yet, and that's why I'm recommending a slightly higher contingency than we would on other projects just to allow for what may not have been seen in that assessment.
Better safe than sorry.
Yeah.
Any questions from council? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Oh, okay. Then I would move to authorize and award funds in the amount of seventy-seven thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty cents for asbestos abatement in the city facility at 400 East Main Street, including the award of a contract with Asbestos Professionals LLC in the amount of sixty-seven thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-five cents.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Doug Glasper?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry?
Yes.
Mayor Frank, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. And moving on to staff reports. Staff have any reports or comments they'd like to make? I see everybody slowly reaching for their microphones.
I had the pleasure of going to Rural Philanthropy Days today in Ridgeway, which is a gathering of nonprofits and governments and some of the biggest grant funders, philanthropic funders in the state. And it's taking place tomorrow as well, and it was really excellent to see a lot of our regional nonprofits there. And also Bill Bell spoke to the entire group today at lunchtime on a panel with the Gunnison Mayor, an economic development professional from the West End, Cara Pallone from CODO in Telluride, and also Michelle Haynes. And so I just wanted to share that it's, it's just been an excellent opportunity. It's great to have it in our region. Hopefully sometime we get it back in Montrose, and that, just a shout-out to all of our nonprofits who are doing such amazing work in our region.
Thank you.
Everybody knows the mines about. The cabinets-
We're excited.
The cabinets at Woodgate have been removed, so on to road construction. They're, they're right behind them, ready to go. So targeting, you know, they're still, still at some mercy of some of the subcontractors and such, but targeting to have that open by mid-July. So the last piece, the last major piece that was, you know, mostly out of our control is now done, so.
Now we're picking up another communications cabinet.
This one's easier, they tell.
It's not right on the road this time.
Yeah, this one, they said, so it's the same cabinet, but there's a lot of kind of unique things about the one at Woodgate that made it more complicated, system-wise with their communication system. So that one supposedly will be faster, we're told.
We'll keep our fingers crossed. Your staff comments? Seeing none, city council comments?
I guess the one comment I'd make is in, is more in the form of a promotion. I don't know how many folks got to hear and see the Indianapolis 500 over the Memorial Day weekend, but as you know, the city is sponsoring a concert at the New Amphitheater for the Fourth of July, and the headliner will be the group of a boy, a girl named Sue. I knew I'd get that wrong. A girl named Tom and a boy named Sue. There you go. But a girl named Tom was featured as singing the National Anthem at the Indianapolis 500, and they did an outstanding job. So I would just encourage our citizens to come out and see that. I think it's going to be a great, great show on the Fourth of July.
And that's being held at our Rotary Amphitheater, which we just kind of christened with a big first, big summer music concert this week, or last week, I guess it was, and it was fantastic, fantastic venue, fantastic time.
And the concert is free.
And the concert is going to be free as well. Mr. Yuliberry, any comments? Mr. Glasper?
No, I don't have anything.
All right, I just hope you're feeling better. All right, I just hope you're feeling better. All right.
Me too.
Better than you sound.
I think I sound worse than I feel.
All right, well, if that's the case, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion in a second. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.